Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City Bet North Committee. The whole meeting today is Monday, June 17th, 2024. It's 5 o'clock PM. On our agenda, we do have some operational items for tomorrow night to take a look at. Items six through 10 are here. And for our update on these items, we welcome our community development director, Mr. Mark Hunt. We appreciate you guys being here. You have the floor.
Thanks, Your Honor. Taylor and I are going to tag team on this presentation, and some of it's going to be obviously a bit of a repeat because you've been through multiple iterations. So we'll just start the slide deck, and we're going to do all three of those operational items in one fell swoop, if that pleases the council.
Thanks, Taylor. Appreciate you being here. Taylor, best of it.
So if you're keeping square at home, the cases are 24023, 24024, and 24034. Three pieces here that you need to understand. The comprehensive plan update, the ordinance adopting that. I have a public hearing first reading on that today. At the same time, we're going to do our downtown master plan so that we have alignment of those two plans because they really interplay off of each other. We've talked about that in the past, and we're just kind of bringing it forward now. So you may have to go back to the memory banks for that one. And then remember, we have a new future land use map with some new categories, but we still have our old zoning. So we need to crosswalk from the new future land use map to the old zoning, but don't worry, we're going to update our zoning, make a new zoning ordinance post haste. Okay, so we're working on that at the moment. But in the meantime, we need a new crosswalk table, so just a small section of your zoning ordinance to go from the new plan to the old ordinance. Kind of a historical wordy slide, but this just reminds you, we started this process in 2022. We decided to do a plan update, not a plan rewrite, so we kept most of the plan intact. Tried to work around it, fix pieces, but leave the shell and the major skeletal components there. And just do an update as opposed to a whole rewrite. You've got hard copies, you've got a digital link. Those should be delivered to you, and you can, of course, click on the link. Here's the big piece, probably the most important piece of any comprehensive land use plan is the future land use map. From it, zoning decisions are then made in the future. Future rezonings, look back at the land use and see if those rezonings are allowed. We spend a lot of time on this, Taylor, in particular, and our consultants, RDG. It reflects a lot of new stuff around Interstate 80 and Middle Road and north of that now, and is quite different than what was in the old comprehensive plan. Some things that I would call out are, we plan for some industrial area out on the northwest part of town that used to have been maybe along Indiana Avenue. Changed concepts because of this commercial tourism economy that we're building. We see that growing out in the, out in the Interstate 80 and Middle Road area, and it's reflected on the map. A lot of, you still have a lot of yellow. That's your single-family housing for the most part, residential type use. You still have a lot of that, especially in the middle part of town. Yeah, go ahead, next slide. Little bit more into the detail on this one. Just a reminder that we have some new future land uses that will then result in zoning categories that relate to them. The one we're really excited about is this conservation subdivision. We have some parts in our northern part of our town that are very sloped, very hilly, very hard to develop. We want to incentivize those developed for residential use, but we want to do it in a conservation way. I mean, that we leave the sloped areas, we leave them sloped, we leave them natural, natural areas. We give you credit for that and let you build maybe a little bit denser units in the flatter development portions of it. So kind of reminds you of something where it kind of designed with nature. You leave the creeks, you leave the draws, but you build the housing around those areas. Should be cheaper for the developer, should be a kind of look that we like in Bettendorf, that, that green open look. You may have a smaller yard, but your yard backs up to a large open area. So we're excited about implementing that. Some other things that you'll see is we tried to get a little more detailed on our commercial uses. We have certain corners in Bettendorf that we know are going to grow in the future. We want to preserve those commercials, those corners for commercial growth. And by being a little more gradient, if you will, in our commercial land uses, we now have three instead of just two, we think we'll do a better job of preserving those commercials, commercial areas, so that we don't recreate the issue that we had, oh, maybe a year or two ago now, where we had an old ball diamond, a private ball diamond, that people thought would always be a ball diamond because that's what was there, but the actual land use plan was really commercial. And so we've tried to plan these commercial areas better. We've got more of them to use. I think it does a better job of laying down our intent on those commercial areas to preserve them for the zoning that we want to bring forward in the future. So really proud of the work we did there. Developmental reserve is another thing you're going to see on the map. That's just the holding pattern. It's not really a land use per se, it's just to be developed, if you will. Don't really know what it might be. Somebody else will make that decision in the future. The second most important piece of any comprehensive land use plan, according to me, is the annexation map. You're going to make decisions as a legislative body on annexing areas or not, and the state is going to review your decisions. This map is your guide to how and where you want to annex, and the hashed blue is, is where that would be. And I would say if we wanted to even get more gradient or more detailed, that area on the east is really new, that along Criswell. A lot of activity over there, a lot of developers tire kicking. You've got projects that are probably coming at you in the short term in that area, so an active annexation. To the north, not quite as fast paced, have some, you have some infrastructure issues up there, you have some flow as far as gravity to work with a sewer, but still possibilities abound. So I'm the broad brush guy. The kid who really knows what's going on is Taylor. So he took your comments and went through and tried to implement them line by line. Now, we don't have a line by line transcript for you to say change one to change two. But I asked Taylor to put a few slides together to talk about what you saw last time and what's different now, so that you have the comfort that your voices were heard and that those plans, those words were implemented in the plan. And I'm going to turn it over to Taylor, but I'm going to have to answer your questions before I do.
Any questions for Mark? Yes, Lisa.
I don't remember if the name was developmental, whatever you said was open.
Developmental reserve?
Yeah, yeah. You said was kind of open for whatever. Say somebody smack in the middle, say an owner says, gee, I want a commercial. You know, what do we do as far as, can we say yes? Can we say no?
So most of our development reserve, not all of it, is outside of our city boundary at this time. So you do have an annexation that would have to occur first. So your annexation will be, they'd have to request to be annexed. We'd have to decide if we want to do that. Maybe we do. And then we annex it, and then it goes into, initially it goes into an A1 type zoning. So after the annexation occurs, that instant, it falls into A1, if you will. From that point, they have to apply for a rezoning, go through the same process you're used to, and you get to review it, how to conditions, say yes, say no. You're not obligated. I would be fearful, but not against, in all cases, a project that came outside of our city boundaries that asked for annexation today. That's well beyond our, kind of our developed area, our infrastructure capacity, our road capacity to serve, because then we extend ourselves and don't really have the capacity to do it. So you never say never, but that project is hard for me to imagine right now. I think the more, the more close in time ones are probably along Criswell, where you've got a much better idea. You've got some land uses proposed. It's not in development reserve. We've gotten a little more detailed for you, so you'll be able to respond to those easier.
See, like, I wouldn't have imagined industrial, but, you know, say, something came flying out. Okay.
And I think the key thing with the development reserve is, this is a projection from now, how our growth patterns are going till 2045. This is a living document. We go through future land use map amendments quite often per year, one or two. So that could be a consideration. It's an application that council would consider, and then the zoning, rezoning could be subsequent to that. So this, this map will be amended free as the growth goes forward.
Other questions for Mark? Okay, Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
So back in May, we met, we had a copy of a plan that was distributed in March. That was the plan that we were going off of, receiving all comments and feedback. I collected comments from staff, from our plan zoning commission, from city council, put them in a, all written red notes in a master edit file right here. But these are just a selection of those, some high level amendments that were done in the current draft plan that you have online and printed out. One comment regarding our, what our development character areas, which is a zoning district, and how they integrate into our future land use map. There's a whole set body of text was, which was rewritten to kind of clarify that we still are, we have a hybrid zoning approach. This future land, land use map allows both our classical Euclidean zoning with your R1, R2, C1 districts, but it also allows someone to come in and with a master plan, development character area, and that's really what it is, and allows you to see everything at once and how it allows for compatibility of, that is really tough to do on a meets and bounds Euclidean zoning. So we kind of rewrote that text, body of text, tried to clarify that it's a hybrid zoning approach. Both are available. We are going into the zoning code update and plan to, one of the comments was to lower the acreage threshold for development characters, which now is 20 acres, maybe consider something less, five or 10, but that has not been identified yet. So that's something we'll do on our zoning code update. Another comment from our playing zoning commission, this kind of reflects some experience from some long meetings, is in our, each of these land use descriptions, these designations, referencing not just what its intent is to allow, but some of the specifically not allow. So when you have an R5 district, it's not really intend, it's not intended for single-family housing. If you want that R5 district, if you want a low, a high-density area, you're not going to build low-density R1 housing, or for C1, you're not building things that are, have big negative externalities like noise and lighting. It's for a small mom and pop shop or a ice cream, maybe something of that intent.
Remember, we're, he's using zoning as an example, but even in our land use now, we're trying to say, these land use categories won't have these uses in them. Here's the broad uses, and we'll zone for them later, just so you understand that analogy. We use zoning in that analogy, but we're talking about land uses in the company.
And so that was clarified, and you can go through the descriptions. It clarifies our intent of what we want in certain areas and doesn't allow developers or public to kind of go through loopholes or the vagueness of the description. The highlighted, one comment from the P and Z, we have a lot of areas outside, north of Interstate 80, east of Criswell, which are growth areas, but we also have quite a bit of acreage within their city limits, south of 80 and west of Criswell that are still undeveloped, and we really wanted to highlight those. They were highlighted, they were identified in the, that section of the plan, but we kind of brighten those colors up and made sure that those were identified. There's cer, there's certainly a lot of acreage that is not developed, and it's farmland within our, you know, near Forest Grove Road, Hopewell. So that was one section that we edited. Another major, which was a lot of work, but we did do it, all the maps should be consistent. We are annexation map, our future land use map, all the inset maps, the parks plan map, so they should have all the same annexationary boundaries, kind of all of the background boundaries. They should be, all of the alignment is there. One that we have spoke quite a bit about was expanding that annexation map west of Utica Ridge Road. That was done quite a while ago, but wanted to show that on there as well. Moving on to our, some of our other chapters that aren't land use transportation or subareas. There were some comments about how complete streets were being discussed in the plan, how they were being mandated or suggested that they should be in every street. That was articulated in a little better wording. So our aim is really to improve, implement complete streets where they'll be used, which is usually on your collectors and your arterials, not your local streets. There are ways to do complete streets, of course, on your local streets, but not usually with a lot of infrastructure additions. So that was reworded. In our parks section of the plan, there was, this was in our last plan, so this is an update. And regarding our parkland dedication policy, that has been ruled by previous court cases as illegal in some, by Iowa Supreme Court. So we reworded that not as a parkland dedication policy, but more just a park acquisition plan. We need to acquire parkland in the future. How we do that, that's, that's just the action items. We need to identify, we need to figure out how to acquire more parkland as the city grows. So that's really just a change of the same goal in mind, but how we get there is just a different aim. Going on to our implementation, that's our last chapter. A many language to clarify that this plan is just recommending actions. This is not a mandate. This is not, this is not line items. These are a multitude of different action items to achieve overarching goals that the council, citizen, staff have all identified, and we want to get there. So when we look, when council looks at certain options for, say, going through budget or goal setting, this is a guide of certain action items that can help achieve those goals, but these are not mandates, and these are just suggestions. It's like a policy guide. So we really put a lot of wording in there throughout the whole document, but especially in the implementation chapter about this not being mandates. And then the last item noted is related, but there are, these are a lot of action items in here, and this plan is, goes to 2045. It's a long time from now. So there'll be ups and downs in economy, budget, so the budgets have to be, these are separate, separate process through budgetary process, and then this plan. So they have, associated costs with these actions have to be considered and weighed and balanced by council. So that was a whole paragraph was put in there about that. I can really take any questions about the edits right now, probably.
Questions on the edits for Taylor? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the fact that Taylor talked to me for almost two hours on an individual session initially. I appreciate that Mark talked to me for a little over an hour today to try and get my head right on some of this stuff. What they're telling me is that this is a living document and that they will be making annual recommendations to the council for further edits. Some of the things that I had talked to them about today deals with the difference between the policy guide, as Taylor said, and things that to me seem more like sales pitches or advocacy pitches that are found within the document itself. And I've given them a list of some of those things. Just as an example, the city officials should encourage residents to establish neighborhood associations throughout Bettendorf, as the city is vocal about their support of neighborhood associations. These groups will be more likely to form. The city should consider revisions to allow greater flexibility in the types of housing options. Bettendorf officials should discuss allocating resources to establish programs that encourage the construction of housings that will fill gaps in the market. Those things seem to be advocacy or sales positions as opposed to a planning document. Mark has indicated to me that he's aware that this is a document that is updating an existing plan as opposed to a new document that he thinks he can get some of these things taken care of in the annual revision that'll come forward next year, and I'm okay with that, and I appreciate staff having talked to me about it.
Is it your position that those types of statements about what we might aspire to be or encourage council to consider ought not be in the planning document?
I think it's awkward for the, for the document to talk, it's our document.
Right.
It's awkward for our document to tell us what we should do. It's our document. We'll either do it because it's in our document, or we shouldn't have it in our document and not do it. So that's, that's an awkward phraseology to me.
And I think some of the reason therefore may have been that this council believes in those things, and moving forward, we think it's important for future councils to consider those things with, with the blessing or the encouragement of those of us who went through the document at the time.
Sure. And that's, Mark relayed some of that same information to me. He said that as we transitioned from a use-based zoning code to a form-based zoning code, we really had to convince people as much as anything else that this was an appropriate methodology to use. And so some of the sales pitch stuff is appropriate in providing it to the, to the population generally.
Sure. We're the next council down the road.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Taylor while we got him? All right, Taylor, thank you. Moving on.
So Mark touched on our zoning compatibility table. That's our next ordinance related to the comp plan. We have new zoning, new land use categories renamed and a couple added. We have a compatibility table that helps. It's one step of reviewing a rezoning, which is outlined in our preamble of our zoning code, which needs to be amended so they have the same land use names. So this is that zoning ordinance. Here are those new designations. You can see urban low intensity goes to neighborhood light, urban medium intensity goes to mixed transitional, et cetera. That table would look like this. So you have the future land use map designations on your far left column, and then you have your compliant zoning districts on the two right columns. So if a developer or applicant came in and they would like to do a development character area, that's urban medium intensity. That would be a compliant district in a orange or mixed transitional future land use category, or they could do R3 with some C1, et cetera. So that's, this is the table, not just the only table or the only review. There's a step process that's outlined in our zoning amendment section, but this is a, one of the first steps. If it doesn't meet this, you'll have to go to a future land use map amendment. But we're amending this, so it's in alignment with the new future land use designations, and this section was fairly small amendment to our zoning code.
Yeah, so that's, that's the piece that gets you from the old to the new, right? You got some new future land use map, you got a new plan, we still got our old zoning ordinance. We got to make those two align until we get the zoning ordinance updated. This is what gets us there. So this is a truly a code updated zoning code update, so, but it's really just one page. Now, we want to do a lot more to the zoning code after this, so.
So we may have to revisit this table after our zoning code update. We might explore some new zoning districts or, who knows? So this is just getting us in a workable format now, and when we get our zoning code ready for adoption, we can revisit this table if needed and amend it again.
Okay. Questions there? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to verify, at the beginning, you said we were going to continue our hybrid system. So if, if I've got, my house is an R1 house now, we're not going to change my house to a ULI in the future.
Yeah, that's not likely, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the existing zoning districts, and we even say this in the comprehensive plan, they probably are best served by staying in the traditional Euclidean zoning. It's a plan or term. It's Euclid, Ohio is where zoning started, but that's probably best for those areas. Now, imagine areas on our, on our frontier maybe being better for development, character areas. And right now, we say you got to be 20 acres. Well, we think when we get into zoning, we might want to shrink that down a little bit, but we're not going to shrink it down to an individual parcel size where a home like yours or a small subdivision would get, would get transitioned to. It's still going to be a larger area.
So I'm just.
You're safe.
I'm following up, you know, I'm following up for a buyer that's going to buy a home. When he buys a home in a developed area now, an existing home, he doesn't have to worry about, gee, his neighbor's going to sell his house. The neighbor's house is going to be demolished, and they're going to put in a small grocery store there.
Yeah, sure. In general, it's hard to answer.
Yeah, in general.
In general, they're going to say that way. At the same time, town areas transitioning, where we have some homes in our downtown, where those are probably going to transition away, be turned to commercial areas, that's happening right now. But in general, a, a, a existing subdivision developed as such is going to stay as such.
But like the downtown, if you buy a single-family homes here on Grant Street next to K and K or something, you can look at the downtown development plan and know that the plan is that that's going to be commercial in the future. So when you buy that single-family house, you, you aren't surprised when, when you're, when the neighboring house becomes real estate office.
That's right. If you, if you look at the future land use map, that should be your first indicator of what this future zoning might be.
That's right. At the same time, if you buy a lot out the north end that's currently ULI, you can be aware that you may put up a single-family home there, but at the same time, we got commercial, C1 commercial may go next door in that vacant lot next door, particularly if it's on a corner or something.
That's right.
But, so the buyers are informed ahead of time.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on the compatibility table? Okay, go ahead, Taylor.
Our last ordinance, downtown master plan update, this master plan update and was done with shy of Hattery and City Bettendorf staff. It was completed last summer, so in 2023, was not adopted due to one page being the future land use for that downtown. And now that our comprehensive plan with our future land use update, map update is ready to go, we are adopting at the same time for alignment. So we have one page in the plan that is being inserted or per se being amended, and that is your downtown future land use map, which is in alignment with our current, the draft future land use map in the comp plan. You'll see three other geographies on this map, and yellow is our current SMID area. And we also have our downtown overlay district, so that's an extra zoning district with, I believe, council's wellware. And then we also have the gray line, which is just the study area, which the downtown master plan discusses. So they have our different neighborhoods, districts. So those are our three geographies shown on here. They're not in alignment for, well, the, the study area looks at the totality of all the adjacent neighborhoods. The SMID and the overlay district have different, SMID has, obviously have to agree to be in the SMID, and the overlay district has, is generally just our down, core downtown area. But that is all that is being added to that plan, and then it'd be officially adopted with approval of the council.
Questions here? Okay.
And that's, so this was reviewed at the May 15th meeting, all three of these proposed ordinances, and unanimously recommended for approval by playing zoning to city council. So we have our comp plan, premiering Bettendorf comprehensive plan for 2045, our downtown master plan update, and then the zoning ordinance amendment to that zoning compatibility table.
Any questions on any of the presentation for our operational items six through 11?
You guys have done great.
Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question, Mark, on the land use portion that you had on, I think, number one. We have just on the other side of the interchange, the interstate, we have housing. Then we have the golf course. There's rumors, pretty strong rumors going around that as soon as they have water and sewer on that side of the interstate, that that golf course is going to be sold.
Yeah.
And it's getting louder and louder, so I don't know, you know, how close that is to happening, but it's not going to be a green space. I'm thinking it's either going to be housing or it's going to be commercial with what's gone up in that area already.
Yes, sir. At one of the public meetings we had about future land use, the owner of that facility, a family member of the owner of that facility was there. And we asked him that question point blank, is this, is this probably the right future land use? And, and we were encouraged to keep it as, you know, it's park-like, it's a, it's a private golf course, but it's, it's park-like. And so that individual representing that family encouraged that to stay green now. I will always go back to this is a living document that will need to be updated in future land use map amendments will be brought to you for your consideration. And if you wanted to pick one that might come forward and make a bet, I think that's a safe bet. I think I could see that coming forward. But we had that conversation with the family that owns that facility, and we were encouraged to leave it that, so.
Other questions? All right. Let's move on to our consent agenda items. Let's look at consent B. This is our finance director, Jason Schatt, and it's awarding a contract with Bonzac and Frommel for auditing services.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm pleased to bring the results of our, our unexpected summer RFP for the audit services. We received four qualifying responses by our June 7th deadline, and with a committee of staff have analyzed those responses and are recommending that the, the proposal from Bonzac and Frommel be accepted and a contract covering the next five fiscal years be started with that firm. Beyond cost, which was 25% of our, our scoring card, we were really encouraged by the fact that they have a local presence. They're locally owned and operated in Moline. They were the only firm of the four respondents to have a local office. They have expertise in government auditing several cities in and around. They have expertise in government auditing several cities in and around Bettendorf or in and around the Quad Cities, Illinois and Iowa, several schools. I think it's, it's going to be a great fit and we're really excited to get started with them later this summer.
Any questions for Jason? All right. Then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda is consent item B.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Let's move to consent F. For this, we welcome our HR director Kathleen Richland. She's brought friends, or a friend anyway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to just forewarn, a little cold. I, I hope I won't cough, but I'm just giving you a heads up. Thank you, Mayor and city council members. Yes, with me today to present liability numbers is Jeff Young with Arthur J. Gallagher, who is our broker for our liability, general and property insurance. So as it's shown on the screen over here, I think, is it on your screen? I'm hoping.
Let's see.
Is a spreadsheet for premium comparison for property casualty and workers compensation. And I'll address a few areas on the spreadsheet for you. As noted, the numbers on the top of the page, those are the numbers that would pertain to the city of Bettendorf. And if Jeff just scrolls down a little bit to the bottom of the page, those numbers, those premiums on the bottom of the page are actually paid by the aisle. And the total amount to be billed to the aisle for property, general liability and excess is approximately $100,894. On the document, there are various highlighted areas and basically I will be focusing on the 24, 25 renewal numbers. As we had discussed in budget time, the property market has been very challenging and rates were going to increase between 25 and 30%. Public entities continue to face rate increases. ICAP continues to experience significant increases in property claims. Being part of the pool, the city experiences the activity within the pool and therefore would be affected by the loss experienced. Staff budgeted according to the information we had at that time. To begin at the top, you'll notice that the city's property, including contents increased by 65.05% from last year. And this is mainly due to the increased property values and overall rates. General and law enforcement liability increased by 12.64. This larger increase is due to uncertainties around police reforms and staffing shortages, which continue to challenge the law enforcement operations. Auto insurance increased by 34.83%. And this is due to, again, increase in the value and the cost of the vehicles. Public official liability increased by 5.10% and excess showed 13.77% increase. Again, based on the increases in property, general and law enforcement liability as well as auto, excess will fall in line with those expenses. You will notice that the distribution from ICAP again did not occur this year. And that continues to be due to the amount of claims processed from various larger claims. Distribution numbers are based on total losses in the pool. And if there's a surplus based on the percentage, we would receive a, an additional amount of money or credit. It can fluctuate year to year, but as you see, we did not receive that again this year. Therefore, the ICAP package premium increased by 32.24%. And the total package includes buildings and contents, general liability and law enforcement, auto and public officials liability and access. Employee dishonesty stayed flat. Flood insurance increased by 19.03%. Going on to liquor liability and DRAM insurance, the, the city received a decrease from last year based on a third party handling Palmer Grill. Therefore, we show an approximate decrease of 41.45%. The city does maintain liquor liability insurance based on the liquor sales at the forge at the Palmer Hills Golf Course. Moving on to workers compensation, the city did have an increase in the mod factor from 0.77 to 0.89. The increase was due to one lower claim year falling off and a higher year claim coming on. Even with the mod factor being low, the city did also experience additional discounts. Approximately 35% of the premium that includes longevity credit, experience credit, large premium discount and good experience bonus. With the mod increasing and the discounts applied, a premium increase of 16.37 or an increase of $83,120 on the premium from last year. Payroll also increased due to the numerous positions that were added over the past couple of years, mostly in the public safety area. We do still have a zero deductible in play at this time. And every dollar of a worker's comp claim is actually paid by IMWCA right off the bat. On a positive side, the safety committee continues with strength and we have new blood with my new HR generalist. With extensive representation from the department heads or departments, Stacy Griffin with IMWCA, and of course Jeff attends the meetings as well. The city is in year three with IMWCA Safety University as added training on various topics that department heads can designate for their staff. Weekly communication, be safe emails are also sent to all employees as a sign of additional education on how to prevent workplace incidents. In conjunction with Arthur J. Gallagher, the city provides a day long safety training on about 30 items that our staff would be involved in. And we do that twice per year, one in the spring, one in the summer. Approximately 50 people attend, and that includes all of, most of our Bettendorf employees, Davenport, Scott County and Muscatine employees. I do think that the safety committee is doing very well in keeping safety topics in front of all of our employees and trying to help workers compensation claims low. The overall insurance renewal is set for 1.365, $267 or a 29.04% increase from last year. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to assist.
Questions? Jeff, is this indication of a time that maybe we shop the ICAP and go back to the market to see what might be out there? Or did you do that?
The challenge with, with doing ICAP is under the ICAP program, we take our liability, open liability claims with us. So if we would leave ICAP, any open liability, just, just a liability claim.
Right.
Any open liability claim we would take with us from dollar one, including any defense costs, any, any settlements, anything, it would be our responsibility. And no insurance company is going to buy any open, potential open claim going forward. We did look at property this year because we were able to, to leave the property. To be honest, without naming the specific carriers out of reference or deference to them, we had three declinations from fairly large national property carriers because they're just not interested in writing property in Iowa, particularly public entity property in Iowa because of the large schedule we have. Claims in Iowa from a property standpoint have been terrible these last few years. I don't know if you've seen it yet in your homeowner's insurance, but if you haven't, you're sure going to. I mean, there's one large regional carrier that has pulled out of Iowa for homeowner's insurance. So. Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a tough time on, on the property side. The other one that we, we did have a pretty significant discussions with them. It turns out their terms weren't going to be any better than what ICAP's terms were in terms of deductibles and coverage. So at the end of the day, what we benefited, benefited from with ICAP for a number of years, Your Honor, is, is we had really good rates. We, I mean, really good property rates. It might not have felt like it, but last year our property rate was a 16 cent rate, which in the insurance world is really good. This year that jumped up to a 23 cent rate. So that, there's part of the increase. We also had a 12% increase in our values this year, the value of our property. ICAP increased at an automatic 10%, then we added a couple of other things to the process. So combination of increased values and rate equals this large property increase. Until we, and we have, we have some fairly significant open liability claims. So if we ever get those down to almost zero, then we could probably have a good discussion about doing something on the liability side, but for right now, it, it, it just would not be good for us to, to do that. And I said, we looked at property, we can look at property again next year, and we will to see if the property market has changed. I do a lot of public entity in the Quad Cities area and property market has not changed. It's brutal, to be honest. So wish I had better news in that regard.
Well, thank you for looking. That's for any other questions? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion that consent F remain on tomorrow night's agenda for consideration.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, let's move to consent M, please. For that, we welcome our public works director, Mr. Brian Schmidt.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night, we're asking for approval of a resolution to.
Thanks, Jeff. Take care. Sorry, Brian.
To enter into a one-year extension with Riverbend Transit for our fixed route Saturday service and our paratransit services. Last year, we went out for an RFP. We, we, it was a one-year contract with the option of two one-year extensions. The prices were fluctuating quite a bit. So that's why we went with a one-year rather than a three-year with two-year options like we did under our previous contract. Under this contract extension for our paratransit services, we're increasing 1.56%. And Saturday fixed route services are increasing 1.43%. So we're making a recommendation tonight to put that on tonight, tomorrow night's consent agenda.
Questions for Brian? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion that that's remain on consent as item M for tomorrow night.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take that up again tomorrow night. Speaking of tomorrow night, take a look at your remaining consent agenda items. Is there any particular item a council member would like to discuss at this time? Greg Jaeger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to discuss consent agenda item D.
We had a little bit of discussion about that prior to the meeting. Why don't you tell us what your concern or thoughts are?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to engage the Aylers Law Firm to, in essence, intervene in the rate increase request by Iowa American Water. Having gone through this before, I understand a little bit about the procedure and it's almost an automatic right of a city to do an intervention. So if we choose to do that, it's not going to be, that part of it isn't going to be very expensive. But I think we all understand in this case, the, the water company is asking for a large increase, 38%. It is big numbers. And I understand everybody has concerns about it, but in this case, we aren't arguing or wouldn't argue that the costs themselves are inappropriate. That is, we're not saying they've inflated their costs. And we're not going to argue that their rate of return or their profit is inappropriate. What the staff is requesting us to consider is hiring experts in essence to argue that some of the costs associated with the administration of the utility are inappropriately allocated. That is, some of the costs associated with the acquisition of some wastewater treatment plants in other areas are being allocated to the city and they shouldn't be. Now, having looked at rate design, I think there's some merit to that argument. And if I'm working for the water company and the city comes forward, I would be thinking about that. But I also understand that rate design is an art as much as it is a substance. And just like when you buy a new car, whether you buy the new car in Dearborn or you buy it in Chicago, or you buy it in LA, there's a destination cost. And that destination cost is the same, even though the actual cost of delivering the car to you at those various locations is different. It very well may be that the rate board will say, this is a cost, the utility has incurred it, they figured out a way to allocate it. Therefore, just like destination cost, you're going to pay this amount of money. In order to really get over that hurdle, you're going to end up having to hire an expert who's going to have to go in and look at their rate design and calculate other numbers to show to the utility board that the rate design by the Iowa American Water Company experts is incorrect. And then you've got a expert fight in front of the utility board. Which leads me to say I have some concerns substantively about this action. Filing the intervention is easy. Sitting down with them and saying, look, do you want a big fight? Or do you think we can resolve this thing as adults? Seems to be a smart play and I would support us going forward. When we get to the costs associated with this, however, I do, the procedural end of it, which is the cost, seems to be something that makes me a little nervous. Just a month ago, we amended our budget to include $500,000 of money into the risk management fund because the risk management fund didn't have an adequate reserve. Just now, we heard that our insurance costs have gone up and we're going to spend $300,000 more out of the risk management fund that we just replenished a month ago in order to meet our insurance needs. It could easily get expensive to fight this out. And the resolution as presented simply says we're engaging Aylers and Cooney. It doesn't have any kind of a cost limitation on it or analysis on it. And it certainly doesn't talk about hiring of consultants and it's, God forbid I reference Trump, but will the consultant be hired by the attorneys and be billed back to us as part of the legal fees in this setup? I just, I want to highlight my concern and that I need to rely on our corporation council to really watch over this and to give us some good guidance before we really start to go down the cost of this process. Thank you, Your Honor.
Your find of it remains on consent?
I'd like staff to address a little bit about the concern as it relates to cost. But assuming the council wants to keep it on consent, I'm not going to vote against this. I just wanted to make my concerns known.
Okay. Chris, you have anything? Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Councilmember Jaeger, for raising these, you know, excellent concerns and questions. And I, I do appreciate that. I guess there are a few things I would say. The first thing I would say is that we do believe that, that the ultimate cost will be within Decker's authority of $25,000. I also recognize that the, the engagement letter, as is typically the case in a legal engagement letter is, is on the relatively broad side. And we are engaging allers for a specific purpose of, of counseling us on this contested case before the IUB. And one thing it does not include is the ability for allers to engage consultants or experts without our consent. So I, I think maybe the, the bigger point, I think, that perhaps will address Councilmember Jaeger's concerns is that we understand that this is a constant cost benefit analysis that will have to be considered and managed throughout this entire process. And, and the relationship with allers will have to be, be managed consistent with that cost benefit analysis. The council is the, the party that will, that will determine whether the benefit that we are seeking is worth the cost. The cost here, we believe, like I said, it will partly depend on how many, how many parties are going to join this representation. There are still a few potential parties that will, will join. And so, so that is a consideration that we don't know yet and couldn't put into the resolution. But we did see as the first step, the, the desire to intervene before June 20th was seen as thus the next procedural step. And we thought that the, the benefit of doing that for the cost of doing that, which will be pretty negligible, makes sense. So my thought is that we have a continuing discussion with, with council so that you understand the costs that are going into this and what we believe that we will get out of it. We do think that, that this is a unique rate making situation where the advanced rate making language of the statute wasn't really intended for what we believe the Iowa American Water is doing here. That was more intended for the Mid-Americans of the world with particular projects for their particular utility that are being shared with all of the customers. And then this, this is a little different. And so we think that starting this process, engaging allers who are experts in this area makes sense. But we will certainly keep that cost benefit analysis in mind and keep you up to date throughout the process.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
With the understanding that staff does not expect it to. With the understanding that staff does not expect it to exceed $25,000, at least without bringing it back in front of the council and with the need to get it filed by the 20th, I'm certainly okay with leaving it on consent. I did want to raise the concerns, however.
Okay. Anything else on consent D or any other consent? Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um my my uh take on this resolution, we have not limited our our attorney and and uh the firm we're going to hire here to just looking at at the rates uh regarding um purchase of those sewer systems in other towns. Why wouldn't we also look at at their profit? You know, their return on investment number. We have, we're not limiting the uh in the resolution, we're not limiting that.
We aren't, but I do think to to Councilmember Jaeger's point, you know, there are certain typical rate rate case where you're you you that would be a battle of experts that we think would be a very tough hill to to climb. We do think that there might be some lower hanging fruit that we could get for a a lower cost to where that cost benefit analysis would would be in our favor. So I we could look at that, but I think that will be part of our ongoing conversation with council on this.
Anything else on any other consent agenda item from any council person at this time?
Your Honor, can I interject really quick?
Yes.
My apologies. Thank you for your indulgence. I just think it's worth noting really quick. Um I will not say in my infinite wisdom, but in my finite wisdom, there's been some pretty substantial uh items conversed about tonight. And whether it's uh rate design and our position on that matter, contracting Bonzak, the insurance, transit strategies, our comp plan, some of these things show up in our annual goals and some of them don't. And I think it's just worth noting the workflows and the amount of work that's gone in by the staff on these things. It's been a 55-minute meeting, but there is a lot of detail that we've gone into and I just, I think it's worth noting and appreciate the council indulging me and saying thanks to the staff for doing this. This was a heavy lift this this evening, so thank you.
Nice job, Steph. Appreciate it. All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that all consent agenda items remain there on consent for tomorrow night's consideration.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take up consent as written. I have no items to be added to the agenda for tomorrow. Are there anyone else who might have something to add to tomorrow night's agenda? All right, seeing that, I'd like to uh encourage a motion to adjourn. Second. We stand at good work, people. We'll see you tomorrow at 7.